Time being 7:00 PM, all members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A is approval of minutes from August 5th, 2019.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 5th, 2019, as written.
All right, we have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item B, committee reports. Do any of the members have any committee reports they want to make at this time? Seeing none. Move on to Agenda Item B2, which is 470 Main Street, I Storage Landscape Discussion.
You have some pictures?
Okay.
If you want to hand them out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It looks better already.
Could you just state your name for the rec? Oh yeah, pull one of those over if you would.
Okay.
Just state your name for the record, then the floor is yours.
My name is Barry Andrew. I'm District Manager for I Storage.
All right.
Okay, so, um, this is just our proposal to, I guess, more tree-fully job in front along the Main Street. So, basically, we're ready to plant. Just want to make sure that you guys are good with this approach. Right now, we have six giant abrovitae's, and they just haven't grown as fast as we were told they would grow. So what we'd like to do is supplement with eastern white pine. And the size tree that we're looking for is going to be three or four feet bigger than existing trees, and we're told that eastern white pine grows much quicker. And we're hoping that that would be a good solution.
Okay. Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question we got on the eastern white pine. Were you suggested to do that by a landscape design, or?
Yes.
Okay. And when you proposed to do this?
We wanted to do it because it's planting season now.
Yeah.
Yeah, now's the time.
Good. So that will, they will grow to block what we want to get blocked, correct? You think?
Sure.
Is that what they're saying?
Yes.
Yeah?
Sure hope so, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it provides a lot of coverage. You know, this is what we're being told.
Good, good. All set, Mr. Chairman, no problem.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
The questions are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This looks very good. Excuse me. Looks very good. I appreciate the design work and the type of trees that you're going to be putting in there, so I can picture those in about two years will be full and covering everything we have to cover. And I appreciate that, so I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Ryder?
Uh, no, all set, everything looks good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll say the same. I mean, I think keeping the ones you have and then mixing these into that space in between and having them be larger, let them all grow in together, I think you'll get a nice coverage once that's all in. But I think having something bigger added in now will take care of a lot of that, you know, too much that we can see.
Yeah, I was asked if I could, we would like to paint the outside red, which is our new store, our new copy of colors. Who should I go to for the process on that? It's a stop sign.
What color is it now?
It's blue.
Blue.
You're going to paint it gray?
Red.
What color?
Red.
Red. I'd say you probably have to come back in to talk about that and bring in maybe some renderings and stuff, partly because I also don't know what's in the permit. So there may be some limitation in the permit on the coloring, in which case you have to bring it in officially for us to look at?
I'll explore that.
Okay.
On second.
All right, so as far as this is concerned, we're good, right? Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Well, I would suggest that we, first of all, look at the permit, see if the colors on the building now depicted on the original permit. That way, we know that you're supposed to maintain that.
Right.
If, in fact, after hearing that, then we can give you a quick look, a quick look at the site to see what we think about it. Red doesn't jump out at me as being very pleasant, but for a building that size. But I think that's, that's just my opinion. But we'll have to look at what the permit says first.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, Pointing Planning Board, NIMCOG representative. Did, um, we left this kind of hanging the last time. Did, um, was there anybody that had any interest in that? No? All right, well, so for now, I guess we'll put my name in, I'll see if I can attend. I don't know if I will be able to, but that way we at least have somebody on there, so I guess have a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, a second? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and we'll go from there. All right, that takes care of that. Moving on to Agenda Item B4, nonsubstantial change request, 138 Astle Street. Gee, we had you here for so long, I didn't think you'd ever want to come back.
I don't. It's good to see you all, though. Didn't get a chance to email it.
Okay. So, before you get started, there is an email that came in from Mr. Hardeman. All the members have theirs, but I guess they haven't gotten one yet, so. We have it on our packet? It's the edition that was on the table when we came in. All right, if you guys would just state your names for the record, then the floor is yours.
Jim Hanley with Civil Design Consultants.
Christian Murray, 138 Astle Street.
So, I'm sure you recall, we were here last winter, kind of working through this OSRD special permit. February, end of February or so, you guys approved it, and Christian has been out there building since maybe April 1st, give or take. So sometime about mid-July, give or take, Christian sat down with the electric provider, National Grid, and they talked about the utility pole that needs to be removed in order to construct the plan according to the original approval. So, just to kind of get you oriented here, we have a, we had an existing utility pole in this general location here, was called out on the plan, is having to be relocated. The feedback they got from Grid was that that could be as much as six months to move that pole, I guess if it could be moved. Typically, when they tell us six months, try to add a little bit of a factor of safety to that, so really kind of put the construction season in limbo a little bit, as crazy as that sounds, in July. So what we did is we went back and we kind of looked at a couple of different options. Sometime about July 25th, we sat down with ANA and DPW, as well as Conservation, to discuss a couple of different options. Basically threw a couple of different options in front of them and said, this is what we're thinking about, want to get some feedback. They gave us some feedback, within a week or so, plus or minus, we filed this request for nonsubstantial change. That was on July 31. So there's two changes to the plan. Essentially, we marked this plan up, and in essence, the roadway moved down, or west down the hill approximately 20 feet, plus or minus. All of this in here stayed exactly the same while we were at it, because we have the room here, we also tweaked our pond just to have some more separation between the groundwater elevation and the bottom of the pond, since we're coming back in front anyways. So in its entirety, it is a reconfiguration of the access drive to the, to the lots in the back, as well as minor tweaks to that wet pond. Last week, we're in front of Conservation, we got their approval for a nonsubstantial change. On Thursday of last week, we got an initial DPW review letter. Really, there weren't too many issues with it, so we were able to kind of put something together and send that back over midday on Friday of last week. DPW was good enough to kind of give us a call today and just tell us what their remaining kind of concerns were, and I think, in essence, they're summarized here with the letter that ANA provided, I'm sure you provided that to the board as well. So because I kind of had a heads up on this, what I thought would be interesting or good for some context, is we looked at the approved sightlines versus what we're proposing to do, and I just kind of put together a.
So this is new, right, Jim?
This is new, yeah.
So the front page is what was approved on, in February, early this year. And basically what this is, is this is the car sitting in the driveway at the intersection, looking uphill, and so you can see that we have our required 200 feet of site distance, but for the most part, the site distance above existing or proposed grade is probably 12 inches, plus or minus, at that specific location. On the second page, this is our current site, site distance, and you can see again, it's not the 12 inches, maybe it's, maybe it's 6 inches, plus or minus, but it's very close to what was originally approved. I had the opportunity to talk to Christian earlier today, and he'd be more than willing to reshape the area between the end of pavement and the right-of-way line, if DPW would allow that. And I think that's, I think, if I'm reading this on the fly here, I think that's essentially what they're suggesting here. The applicant shall revise the sightlines such that the park site distance can be maintained without disruptions at all times. So we're more than willing to kind of modify that, that area, as long as DPW is willing to let us go into that right of way. Really just a matter of pulling 6 to 12 inches of material out of that area and restabilizing. So that is kind of where we stand right now.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I went by the site and I looked at it again. I agree with Mr. Hardeman. I think if you shape that down, that area, but also maintaining that as part of the site, you know, as, if it gets overgrown, you'll lose that. So I think if you can keep that groomed, so to speak, or maintained as part of the permit, I think you'll meet that site distance, and you'll keep the sightlines. But I think if you, the vegetation gets out of hand, you'll lose it significantly.
Yeah, you might recall, to get the sightlines, previously, we agreed to remove some of the stones.
Stones, yeah.
Of that stone wall, which I, I'm not sure, Christian, if you guys have gotten to yet, but we are doing some work in that area anyway, so we're more than willing to do that.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would concur with Mr. Ryder's analysis. Having looked at this, I would be pleased with the results. My only question is, has the town engineer seen this yet?
The sightline?
No, no, the new.
Uh, yeah, right, what I provided to you on behalf.
Okay.
Yep, so, so not put together like that, but two different, so when we originally did the plan in February, and then what we present or provided in July, that was part of the information there.
So do we have a letter or information from them saying that they concur with the plan?
Oh, so, um, I'm not going to comment on that.
Then we don't have a letter.
Well, he recently sent an email with his latest comments.
Okay.
I understand, I'm not going to comment on it, so.
I think this, this email that he sent here, his last sentence on number two, the applicant shall revise the sightline such that the required site distance can be maintained without obstruction at all times. The only way we can do that is to modify the proposed grade kind of within the right-of-way, and we agreed to do that. So I think we can address it in the form.
Okay. But I still like to get certification from the town engineer.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Well, I guess I'm all set with it. You know, we talked this over and over before, they're not moving it, I'm in a place against mine. I think we should just, oh, yeah.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would a gravel area be sufficient for that, Mr. Hanley?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that certainly would cut down on vegetation.
Well, I think the question he's looking for is to cut down the vegetation, so you have enough sightlines on that side.
Right.
How about a sidewalk, the sidewalks?
I guess we have to look at that, because then we have a sidewalk from nowhere, who knows?
I know that, so.
It's certainly a kind of the gravel extension.
And the bus stop is going to be there, correct, also?
Correct, yep.
So I mean, the bus stop sidewalk area could house parents, kids, all that stuff, you know, so, but, uh, just an idea. My other question is, the detention pond that you're proposing at the very bottom of the street? Do you foresee that being a problem for any of the neighbors that walk that area, that, safety-wise, or is it back far enough?
So, yeah, no, it's back far enough, I mean, it's literally in the identical location that it was in February, it's just that the, previously, we had the bottom of the base flat at a certain elevation, and now we've kind of pitched it so it just, so it's now a, consistent with the existing topography down there, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm all set as far as that goes, just as long as you can provide him enough sightlines and stuff, I think, and if we get some word back from him, what you want to do, or what you propose to do, I think we're all set to go, but all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, yeah, so, you know, it doesn't really matter to me which version you do to address this, it's either going to be, you know, if you're putting gravel there, that's one way. If you're going to leave the vegetation, then we're going to have to make it contingent that you maintain the vegetation so that the sightline is not affected in perpetuity. You know, one or the other is basically going to have to be done in order to address keeping the sightline so that, you know, overgrowth doesn't cut it down eventually. So, I mean, and even, I mean, even if you put the gravel, if anything comes up out of, you know, through, it's still going to have to be dealt with.
Right.
So I suppose we're going to have to put that limitation on either way.
We do have homeowners association, so maybe that's the language we can work into in those documents, just so the lease is in there.
Okay. So then, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's fine, if we do it that way, if we put the limitation in that, you know, they're going to be required to maintain that area in perpetuity.
Yeah.
To maintain the sightline as, you know, as depicted in, or as required. All right, so I'm all set otherwise. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I have one more question.
Yep.
I know the post office is requiring you to put a CBU box there, correct? That's part of the new plan, right?
Yeah, we spoke with them, they said, once we get a little bit further along, they'll come out, they'll tell us where to place it, we'll put it back on the plan and let the town know.
Maybe a good place to put the CBU box down at the end of the road there, so.
Yeah.
Just a, just an idea. Mr. Delaney, you okay? Keep laughing over there. All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
The only thing, you're not talking about in the area we're talking about, here, right?
Oh, but in the, in the general area, so.
All right, just because, I mean, it seems like that would cut down on sightline.
No, but put it, put it back a little bit off the street.
All right, okay. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, so to approve, I guess I'll be adding the rest. Put the sheet with his comment, okay, so, just, just so, before we, before we take the motion, I just want to ask one clarif, clarification question. The bus drop-off pickup area, it just says, in his note, it's just saying that it doesn't extend beyond, you know, the property's frontage boundary lines. We don't need to do any more, didn't we already do that in the original? I'm not really sure what that note was about, so I want to make sure, do we need to include that now?
So, so if I could add to that, the, looking at the new roadway on the plan that you guys approved previously, it was on the right side, just conveniently, more fair and better, it's now on the left side, and the idea is that it's going to be at the location of the existing driveway that's already cut out, that area, and basically it's just going to kind of be a paved pad over in that area. So it's not going to extend beyond the limit of.
All right, so then if it is part, then if it is part of the nonsubstantial change, then we'll make that comment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve, so that motion will include.
You know, with the gravel.
Right, so, so first it'll include the, the switching of sides of the school bus stop, drop-off pickup area, and that it will be, you know, it will not extend beyond the frontage of the boundary lines. And then on the sightline, it will maintain the sightline as required, and that area will either be gravled, or the vegetation will be maintained in perpetuity to maintain the sightline as required. And that will be added to the homeowners association requirements.
Right.
And the other one is the detention pond, the change in the detention pond will be included as well. Okay.
Do you want to include the school bus drop-off area in HLA as well, to be the maintenance of it?
Yeah, I think, wasn't that in the, wasn't that in the original one, that the, the drop-off would be maintained? If it was, they would just add it to this to make sure that it will be maintained in perpetuity as well.
I think it was.
Mm-hmm. But just in case, just to cover it. Would you say there was a waiver?
Was there a change in the waiver or no?
There was a change in the waiver, so, yes, thank you.
Sheet C1 is the waiver modification.
So on the cover letter that I provided with the application. Previously, we had 76 feet here, that waiver was granted, that's tangent in between a, two horizontal curves. This is 51 feet, because we moved this down 20, and by the time we radius that in, we're at 51 feet. So it was a waiver that was granted from the original, I think, 150, and we were down at 76, which was approved, and the change to this plan was only 51.
If we're doing a waiver, but within a nonsubstantial change, does it still need to be done separately as its own thing?
You're modifying an existing waiver?
All right, just to be safe, I'm going to, I'm going to table this motion and take the waiver motion as its own thing, just to cover, cover all bases. So do I have a motion to grant the modified waiver as part of the nonsubstantial change?
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, so that takes care of that. Back to the motion that was on the table, I have that motion made and seconded, do I have, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Oh, the detention. All right, before I move on to the next one, I was, I was remiss not to mention this at the beginning. If anybody is here for Agenda Item D, which is 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street at all, the, that is going to be continued, as is Agenda Item E, which is 1583 Andover Street, as is Agenda Item F, which is 1625 Andover Street, and Agenda Item I, which is 434 Main Street, which is Warmusett Lanes. So those, those will not be heard this evening, they'll be pushed to our next meeting, so if anybody's here for them, feel free to leave, you're not going to miss anything, we're not going to address them tonight. So, back to where we were, which is Agenda Item B5, 20 Carter Street. Do we have anybody here for that?
I'm not aware of them.
All right, then we'll just leave it there, since we don't have anything new to add.
I have, got no responses, so.
Okay. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item B6, which is approval not required plan for 1 Mount Joy Drive, 5 Mount Joy Drive, and 641 Trel Road. Do we have anybody here for that?
Good evening, Jim Hanley with Civil Design again. So filling in for DeCucco, with Little Design, preparing his plan for Grid, the application, but it couldn't make it to. Essentially, it's an A&R plan, we are not creating any additional lots, kind of walk it through this year. So we are at the, along Mount Joy Road, Trel Road, and Andover Street. The owner of the property is George Sianus Irrevocable Trust, and he owns all three of these lots. So I took this plan, I just kind of marked it up so that you have a, hopefully a better idea of what is going on here. The lines in the pink are existing property lines that are to be either removed or modified into the lines that are in the yellow. So essentially, we're adjusting two property lines, we're not creating any additional lots, and each of the three lots exceeds all of the zoning requirements, so frontage area, perimeter ratio, and then, you know, the ratio we provided is also highlighted there. I think this will be pretty straightforward.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
Well, the lots that are left appear to be legal, I may say. Realizing that one of them is on a radius, but more than enough frontage and conforms to the acreage. I'm not sure about Lot 2, because it doesn't spell out how many, what the lot size is. Unless I'm missing it.
Right here, 1.04.
In between the.
Oh, but not on the, okay.
1.04 acres.
Okay. So it appears that all three lots are legal and fine. I'm all set?
All right, Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm all set, too. My only question is, the frontage on Lot 2, Mr. Hanley, what is that frontage?
150.9, 150, right there. That's the smallest of the three, but legal.
So you're not planning on establishing a building lot at this time? Right? You're not planning on establishing a building lot there this time? Are you not planning on building there at this time? On lots?
That I can speak to.
Okay.
I mean, it is a, it is a legal law.
Yes.
Area of frontage, I don't know, I don't know that.
Good, okay. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set, all the guidelines, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
All set as well.
The chair is all set as well. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the plan, approval not required for 105 Mount Joy Drive and 641 Trel Road.
All right, so I have a motion to endorse the A&R plan as submitted, all those, and I have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, all set. We have that here? So make sure we sign that before we leave tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item C, which is zoning articles.
There we go.
All right, so, yay. What are we calling this? Okay, so the first one, I'll actually keep these in order, so. Okay, so the first one, I'll make sure we keep these in order, so... Okay. Alright, so the first article, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to waive the reading? A second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So our first one, the first article is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuxbury zoning bylaw, section 6800.2, by removing the sunset provision, making the ban on marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, and/or any other types of licensed non-retailer marijuana-related businesses permanent. Do we have anybody here for that? Oh.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. I think the board remembers when we were dealing with adult recreational marijuana, and we had put these sunset provisions on these types of uses, and then said that we would go to ballot in April this year. And I think everyone's aware that all three of those types of uses, cultivators, testing labs, and manufacturers, lost by almost a 2 to 1 margin. So, with that, decided to bring forward an article to remove that sunset provision, so that it would be a permanent ban of those types of marijuana establishments.
Alright, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, I do remember the, the vote taken by the residents of Tuxbury, not in favor of, of the marijuana establishments at all. I have noted the fact that the majority of those establishments that open around the state, there haven't been many problems, I don't think. But, notwithstanding a number of issues, I'm sure, by the, by the chief of Tuxbury. But I think I would probably vote with the residents of town and, and make this a final decision when they come to town meeting, and vote against this as well. But I know it is also a tax revenue for the towns, but if the residents don't want it, then we don't want it, I guess. So, all set, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, Mr. Fowler.
I would go along with Mr. Fattalia's thoughts on this, and would support this also.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I agree with the other board members that I'll support this as well. Thank you.
The, yeah, the chair has nothing to add, I'm fine. Just to the town, let the town meeting make their decision. Alright, so with that, I'll open up to the audience. Would anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns on this article? Seeing none, that's the board. What is the board's, what is the pleasure of the board on this article? We're not going to use the numbers, right? Because they change sometimes, I'd rather just stick without numbers, okay. So, I won't use the article, just this article as being, as presented.
I'll make a motion to support.
Recommended adoption, okay.
Of, I don't know what article you want to...
Marijuana article.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to recommend adoption of the marijuana article as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll put it unanimously to that we have a 5-0. Alright, thank you. Moving on to the next article, this is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuxbury zoning map dated September 2017 by adding parcels 102-16 and 103-101 to the Heavy Industrial 1 district.
So, the, the article then goes on to say, as depicted by the crosshatch map below, or take any action relative there, too. So, in the warrant itself, there is going to be a copy of the map, which shows those two parcels. What happened at the annual town meeting was that, this was a citizen's petition that came in, and it came in without a map. So, we did receive an approval from the Attorney General's Office of all of the zoning articles that were before town meeting, but they did leave a comment that we needed to go through the map amendment procedure for town meeting. So that's what this is, is actually just coming back and taking care of the map itself by town meeting action.
So, housekeeping?
It's housekeeping.
Alright, I'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. Will the map be in color? Because I know every town meeting, there's an issue with people, you know, photocopies and photocopies. People don't understand hashes and X and what looks like a line or a pencil drawing. I recommend if you, if this is something that needs, should be in color.
Yeah, I'll double check with the town manager, I know he's getting ready to send it off to the printers this week, so... There may be one or two, at least one other article, I think, that you'll be hearing tonight that has color in it, so I'll double check on that.
I think to, you know, all fairness to the residents that are there, taking their time. I think color helps them understand what's going on. I'm all set, other than that, thank you.
Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am all, all set on the housekeeping issue, just not putting the map into the, into the town article. And, you know, I supported this when it came up prior to this meeting, and I support it again, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I'm all set with it as well, I supported it before.
Alright, the chair supports the housekeeping matter as well. Anyone in the audience with... I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler, I thought I started with you.
I love it when, I love it when that happens. Believe it or not, I have a long-winded speech, but I'm going to hold off on that. I'm all set.
Alright, so with that, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this article? Alright, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board on this article? We'll call this one zoning map.
Begging motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt that article as, as a housekeeping issue for the most part, and just to add the map as required by the Attorney General's office.
Alright, so I have a motion to recommend adoption of the zoning map article as submitted this evening. I have a motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, thank you. Brings us to the third article, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuxbury zoning bylaws by adding assisted living facility and special care residence to Appendix A, Table of Uses Regulations, Section B, exempt and institutional uses, and amend Section 1000 by inserting special care residence. Do we have anybody here for this article? No one, alright. Do we have any idea where this comes from? Okay. Alright, Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set with this.
Okay. Mr. Delaney.
An assisted living facility, and they want to make it a special care residence as well? Is that what this is all, I have no idea what it's all about. That's why I'm asking the question.
I, I don't know what the intent...
We have an assisted living building, and we're going to a hospital. That's what it looks like to me.
So this is, this is listed as number 20, so let me read you the summary that's listed at the bottom. So, it says, "The purpose of this article is to allow the lawful use with planning board approval of a new or existing building as an assisted living facility in the Heavy Industrial Zoning District. In addition, purpose of this article is to allow the lawful use with planning board approval of a newer existing building as a special care residence in Heavy Industrial Zoning District." So then, my reading of that then is, is you're going to be able to put these in the Heavy Industrial District, which you weren't able to do before, but only with planning board approval.
Okay.
Accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so, that clarifies that then. We still, was this town submitted, though?
No, no, I just...
Alright, so, do you have any other questions, Delaney?
Yes, now, now I understand it's two separate buildings. It's one building combined in itself to be both of the, you know, special care and assisted living.
Well, they're just, they're two different categories within our bylaw, so they're basically just saying, either of those will now be allowed in a Heavy Industrial District with the planning board's approval. Mr. Fattalia?
Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, too.
Mr. Ryder.
We do not know who, is this a citizen petition?
I mean, I guess would have to be, if it's not town submitted, it has to be.
Didn't know if it was handed in by any particular person, group, any...
I don't have this, I don't have that information at this time.
I believe, Mr. Ryder, Mr. Secconi is a, the owner, Stephen of MDR Construction. And he was also purchased the old police station property on Main Street. I'm not sure if that's his intent there, because I don't think that's Heavy Industrial there, but, so, but I don't...
It was, so it was a citizen's petition by Mike Secconi, there was 100 signatures that were certified by the town clerk's office on the petition, and it is to allow for this in Heavy Industrial District. So, it, it wouldn't be on Main Street, because we don't, we only have one location that's Heavy Industrial.
One lo, you're saying there's that one location?
There's one location on Main Street that's Heavy Industrial because of a storage facility that was built probably 20 years ago. So, I didn't want to say that there was no Heavy Industrial on Main Street, but Main Street is predominantly commercial, it's all commercial with the exception of that one parcel where it's a two-story over by Old Boston Road, I think, which is self-storage.
Okay. Okay. I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no problem with this, I mean, especially since, you know, even with the change, it still requires the planning board's approval, so it's not a by right. So they're going to have to come in and bring it before the board, so, you know, with that, I have no issue with it. So, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board on this article? Let's see, who want to call this one? We'll just, we'll just call this the assisted living facility, special care residence article.
A motion to approve this change.
Alright, so we have a recommendation to, for adoption of this article, do I have a second? Alright, a motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I think we're going to go 4 to 1. Alright, that brings us to the fourth article, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuxbury zoning bylaws by amending Section 2000 districts by adding a new zoning district to Section 2100 entitled Residents R10 District, R10 then in parentheses as well, amend Appendix A Table of Use Regulations by adding a new column entitled R10, adding a new column entitled R10 to the Table of Dimensional Requirements, and amend the town Tuxbury zoning map dated September 2017 to include a Residents R10 zoning district. Alright, so this one... So the summary on this one is, "The intent of the proposed articles is to provide a new zoning district, R10, to allow for quarter-acre zoning at the property at 527 Chandler Street, owned by the Oblete Fathers for single-family dwellings." Okay. Do we have anybody here for this one?
Thank you.
Apologies. Gentlemen, if you'd just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Attorney Christopher Fox, Martha Kaline.
Tony Byron, representing the Oblete Fathers, is a friend.
And I'm Timones, with Allen Major Associates.
Where is yours, gentlemen?
I want to thank you all very much for the opportunity to sit, to sit here and bring this, this zoning request to y'all. Of course, the Oblete Fathers own the property at 527 Chandler, and across the street as well. The Obletes are dwindling in numbers, and, you know, a lot of donations, things like that. What, what they're doing, what we're doing, is looking at the real estate holdings that the Obletes do have, and seeing what, what is good, what, what can be done with it, what can be done to the community with it, and to, and to try and create value in these real estate holdings as a, as a annuity for the Obletes themselves in future years. The Obletes have no intention of all, of leaving the community, they're, they're not moving away. The Obletes are maintaining property across the street from 527 Chandler. This is a beautiful piece of property that is zoned residential, and it's zoned for larger lots. You know, with that said, a higher, a little bit higher and better use, and looking at this both for the Obletes and a, and a value standpoint for the city of, of Tewksbury, the town of Tewksbury, is, is to take the one-acre zoning and, and create a little bit smaller quarter-acre zoning, and larger, a little larger, thus creating more of a, a little smaller community area that's not one-acre lot, but more family-oriented, something that's very nice for the area. As you can see, there's a lot of residential in the area. This is also an opportunity to take the property that is, right now, it's, I guess you'd say is zero tax base, and rather than, than nine homes, that would probably generate about $90,000, this is also an opportunity to, to rezone this, such that we're putting, they could put 25 to 28 homes in there, which would generate in the neighborhood of about $290,000 to $300,000 a year, for Tewksbury as well, too. So, with that said, it's an opportunity for the Obletes. It's an opportunity to create a smaller infield, pocketed community, more oriented towards younger, smaller families with kids, given the orientation of the homes, and also as a tax revenue for the, for the, for the city as well. And we looked at this, at several different uses, we just didn't pick this one. Of course, we'd love, I mean, not we'd love, but highest and best use would have been multifamily, more return, more income, et cetera. We met with the city, we met with the planning staff, we met with, with the fire department, and I'll turn this over to Tim in a quick minute. But, what we learned was, they would rather, there, there is a need for smaller acreage homes, and this is why we're coming in with this approach. Tim, we've engaged Tim, we have, we've been, have Barry Sullivan as a consultant on homes, so we're trying to do the best we can for the city as well, so...
That, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Tony had mentioned, we had met with the town early on in the process, we went out and actually surveyed the property, and we delineated the wetlands, so to put the site in context for those watching on the TV. It's, it's on 527 Chandler, Hellavita Street is flanked on one end. McKenzie Circle is kind of off, off to the, to the south, and round, we actually have bought Round Pond. And right now, the site is heavily wooded, except for a small area up in front that's fenced off in, in grass. So the intent was, as Tony had mentioned, we came forward to the town and met with the planning staff. The department has about the potential to put a friendly 40B on the site, or another higher use. And the flavor that we heard was that, that, there was no appetite in that in the town, but if we'd be willing to come forward...
but would, if we'd be willing to come forward with a zoning amendment to possibly bring in quarter acre lots with a 50-foot wide road right away, 35-foot travel away with sidewalks on each side to create somewhat of an affordable neighborhood with smaller houses on smaller lots. So as a result of all those discussions that we had, and we came up with this conceptual subdivision plan, and then we worked with Martha and Colina on the zoning amendment.
So what we have before the board today is proposed articles for consideration at the fall special town meeting, is to see if the town will vote to amend section 2000 districts by adding a new zoning district to section 2100, establishments entitled Residence R10 District, R10. We also have before the town to see if the, the town will vote to amend Appendix A Table of Uses Regulations by adding a new column entitled R10 to the Table of Use Regulations. It's gonna mirror the R40 districts that's, that are current. We also have to amend Appendix B Table of Dimensional Requirements by adding a new column entitled R10 to the Table of Dimensional Requirements, to allow for quarter acre lots with a minimum frontage of 100 feet. And then the rest of it will mirror the R40 districts.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to say for the record that this article was put forth without my recommendation in particular, so I wasn't involved in this.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, so the land as it currently sits, about 11.3 acres, is zoned for R40, which requires one acre of residential homes. If the zoning amendments are adopted, we'll be able to add roughly 25 to 28 housing lots.
Now, the site itself sits, again, sits in an, in an R40 district, but, you know, your commercial's on 38, there, within the, in the R40, there's, there's some municipal zoning, and then there's multifamily. So it is a residential use within a residential district, just again, with a, with a less stringent, smaller lot sizes. Setbacks would be a 25 on the front, 15 on the side, max building height would be two and a half stories or 35 feet with a 20% building coverage. Alright, we'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the idea of you trying to help the town out, but I guess my first question is, is why didn't we get this prior to this meeting?
I can't answer that question, I'm not sure why you have that in your.
Okay. Because you're giving us these two pieces of paper to look at, read, digest, and make a estimated guess or some opinion on, on something we're just seeing now.
Yeah, well, it's a conceptual subdivision plan. I mean, we still have to go through the planning board process, we have to go through the conservation commission. When we had met with the. Can I just interrupt you for just one second? Because we do end up with this problem sometimes, so I just want to clarify. These are informational, they are not part of what's being submitted to us. The article change is for the property only, a change in the zoning of the property, this is not to be included in what's being, it's not being proposed. This is just an example of what it might look like for reference purposes, so, and I don't want anyone to get hung up on the fact that this is what's being presented because it's not part of the article request. Just, just for clarification. Thank you. Again, when we had our planning meeting with the, with the department heads, there were some concerns about this conceptual plan itself. We recognize that we need to go through a full planning process, we're gonna need to go through a conservation commission process. This was just a conceptual plan to see what we can possibly do with the site itself. So nothing's been submitted officially to any of the town boards.
Another question I have for you is why would you just consider, consider single-family homes there, rather than 25 to 28 units?
And I can let Tony answer that, but I think that they.
Mr. Curious.
It, it's, it's really too bold, and the higher, I'd say higher and better use, it creates a little bit additional value for the property itself, is one thing. Secondly, it's more of a, it's, it's a design concept as well, to create a smaller, pocketed, smaller friendly height residential area that's not big one acre lots that you can't, you know, it's hard for families with kids, anything else, neighborhoods, we've got a park laid out there, that's the thought as well, too. And also, again, I know this sounds kind of, but it's a, it's a tax generating, a little bit better tax generating opportunity as well, too.
So you're trying to make these units affordable for residents of Tewksbury?
Absolutely.
Okay. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Delaney?
The one question I have with the units, are there, are you designating how many are affordable? Like, in other words, you know, most developments are going to the town, you take 25 units, 2% or 3%, 10% of it has to be affordable.
I think there's been that discussion, but again, I don't know whether it's one or two lots, et cetera. I believe Barry is very involved on that as well.
Like you said, it's kind of a sound, so it'll be, that it's not two or three units.
Just, again, from a clarification standpoint, just so everybody's on the same page, if this zoning is changed, this is not a subdivision, like, that we do. If this zoning is changed, these would be by right, single-family homes, just like a normal R40 lot, where someone would just build a house, would never come to us. Each of these would be individually built as individual homes, they would not have to come to us for subdivision, therefore, at this time, we wouldn't be able to make any requirement or designation for affordable units. There is no, there is no mechanism for that in this. This is simply creating a zone, or a new type of zone that we don't currently have, that would be single-family homes, but they'd be smaller lots, but it's not a subdivision. Despite the fact that it may kind of look like one in the picture, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that, you know, nothing we say, and nothing in the future would come before this board, if this went through, to require any kind of affordable component. That would simply be, you know, the builder would make any kind of determination like that on their own, but that's not anything we would have control of. So just, just for clarification. I'm all set, sir. Alright. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, this is something that we have discussed within the zoning changes in the We have a lot of areas that, because the town is R40, we have a lot of areas where there are some lots, this being one, that are surrounded by small lots. So that depict, that's why we, on the zoning committee, were trying to make it so that you could have matching zone use, R40, R20, R10. So this is something that falls in the lineup, what the zoning by our subcommittee has discussed. And what I like about it is the fact that it's a, a use of a piece of, a nice use of a piece of property that is, by the area of the stormwater management ability, will probably allow it to be not an area that's going to overflow with water, because it's near the pond, and it's, there's enough area without any houses in it, so that it can be built in the manner that the engineers would want to build it. I'm not an engineer, but I'm just saying, instead of making it so that you have to, okay, where are we gonna put this? Well, you have a, probably a, a four acres area, but haven't added it up yet, but that is fine with me. The, often wondered, this parcel is sat unused, except for the septic system, over the, over the years, and it has, the Obletes have quite a bit of history here in Tewksbury, going back to the original building, and then the fire, and then the, the new building. And I guess I could say I remember it all. But I, I'm all set right now, until such a time as you get a definitive plan, so I'm all set for the zoning.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I, I will reiterate, reiterate what Mr. the, what other board members stated, they're just getting this mapped tonight. And I understand, one of your, your comments, you're 20, $290,000 to $300,000 in tax revenue, based upon $90,000 in tax revenue on nine, nine-plus homes. But you're increasing roughly 2.2, 2.5 children per house on an affordable home, 15,000 roughly per child, per house, that tax revenue that we've gained is now we're in a deficit. And, you know, I've sat here on this board for a couple of years, and we've put people through the wringer, trying to build an addition based upon not having enough setback, you know, 12 feet or 15 feet, and we want to turn around and support something where we're gonna allow 15-foot setbacks, and allow a new development to come in. I, I personally think it's the wrong message to send, I think the residents, it doesn't fit there. You know, obviously, it's just my opinion, but I understand it's a buildable lot, and at some point it will be developed, but we have the guidelines for a reason. And I think we opened up this box, we're gonna open up for many more. So, that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'll take one step back, and just again, the, the, the submittals this evening, again, are informational. The request here before us is for the creation of a new zone, which in this case, R10. As Mr. Fowler said, you know, R10 is something that I know his committee that he's been looking at, but I've also made clear my feelings about the need or the reasonableness of having an R10, and as you mentioned, an R20 district, because having a football-sized lot required everywhere is foolish. It makes no sense. It's, that's what an acre is, it's a football field without the end zones. It makes no sense. It's not, the requirement is basically made so that people can't build. It, it doesn't really serve a purpose to have a lot that size. 150 feet of frontage is the width of a football field. It, it makes no sense. And very little of this town is actually built on acre lots. I would say, without having the exact number, I'd say it's, it's well over half of the town is not on an acre lot, if you go around the town. So having an acre lot requirement is insane, makes no sense to me. Excuse me. So I've advocated for the R10, I would advocate for an R20 as well, which I would presume would be half acre, I'm guessing. If this is quarter, that would be half. So what I would say is, in this, in this submittal, and looking at it, so that you can envision what might go on that sized property, I'm not necessarily against it, but what I would say is that if there were an R20 district, I think that would fit better here than an R10. Because I think this is, for, for that area, while I think, you know, many of the houses around it, I think it's hard to visualize, because again, you have their property across the street, which is a large piece, with really nothing on, you know, it's a pretty large piece, but as you go down the rest of the road, those houses are very close together. There's no way those are acre lots, the rest of the way down there. So it's not necessarily as out of place as it may seem at first blush, because if you go in the other direction, you do end up with some rather large lots going down, you know, Halavish. So, you know, that's why I wonder if maybe this wouldn't be better, as sort of a middle ground of, you know, what would, I guess in my mind would be R20, as opposed to R10. Again, neither of those exist presently. So in either case, whether it was you proposing it, or, you know, eventually coming in the zoning changes, hopefully, whether or not this property would fall into one of those would depend on whatever the determinations were, but, you know, like I said, I'm an advocate of it, of the, the R10 districts. However, one of the things that I've thought of in, in the creation of those is that having the exact same dimensional allowances of an R40, I'm not sure necessarily makes sense on smaller lots like that. And you're talking about a quarter lot, that perhaps some of the size requirements would be wise to, 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 to reduce as well. Not necessarily the setbacks, because if, if I'm not mistaken, these are the setbacks of the R40. You're just rolling them over into a smaller lot, but you're using the same setbacks. So they're not changing anything, this is the exact same setbacks of an R40, it's just a lot is smaller. So they're, I mean, they're still gonna be just as far back from the road, just as far from the house next to them, but I wonder if a house the size of an acre lot, house, makes sense on a quarter acre lot? You know, two and a half stories, and all of those like that in that area, I wonder if that becomes a bit too big. Like I said, I mean, I like the R10, but I've, I've always sort of envisioned that there'd be some reductions in the size of the houses, if you get this reduction in the lot size, a reduction in the house size, sort of makes sense, because, again, my thought is, when you think of like South Tewksbury, think of all those houses, where you can basically reach out and, you know, borrow a cup of sugar from your neighbor, most of those houses are not huge houses, those are smaller houses on smaller lots. So, you know, I, again, I wonder about the, the density of this, or what could go there if this zone change happened. And like I said, I think I would be more inclined to potentially like an R20, which would be half acre lots. I mean, we reduce what you can do, obviously, but I, I wonder if that might not fit better than the R10. Also to be considered, again, I know you made reference to the friendly 40B discussion that you had, and obviously, that wasn't something that was recommended, but I'd be remiss in not reminding everybody that, you know, there's the friendly, and then there's the unfriendly. And if we are not in a position to stop a unfriendly 40B, you know, while you may not love this, you may dislike what could go there instead, much, much more. So should be kept in mind, and at least referenced in making those decisions. It's easy to say no, and then when you see the alternative, wonder how that happened. So, I think that's it for me for now. Anybody in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Go ahead. Just give your name and your address, and the floor is yours.
Charlie Room, Patton Road, but I have a bunch of property on Halavisha Street, and I grew up on that lot, so I know what you're talking about. There's a significant amount of wildlife that live on that lot, a significant amount. They're gonna be displaced, they're gonna come live over my, over my yard, probably. But the other thing I, I just want you to consider is that parcel is less than a mile down the road here, the more pieces you put in a small spot, it's gonna affect traffic on Main Street, which is horrible as it stands. Main Street is right around the corner, and it's gonna create a problem there, whether you want to admit it or not. The other thing, when you talk about this parcel, we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, down at the Gopa, is that, is there any opportunities from the town, when they threaten us with 40B and this and that, is there any opportunity, and I'm a Catholic, to get reimbursed for any of the monies that this town has spent toward keeping that property up and toward keeping the Obletes intact over there? We've spent a lot of money, my, our tactors have gone into a lot of upkeep and development and stone plow and everything else around this town. For as long as they've been there, they've been pretty much tax-free, I believe, up until the point that they want to sell it. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be, I just want to be clear, we're not threatening with a 40B on this project. We actually came forward to the town and asked what the appetite was for that, and the reason we went in this direction is because we were told there was no appetite for it. So I just want to be clear that we're not advocating for a 40B. It wasn't my intention to make it seem as if you were, I just, I wanted everybody to have all the information, and, you know, what you propose is what you've proposed. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that everybody understands the big picture.
I appreciate that.
Things that can happen have to be considered when you're making the decision. That's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns on this?
Chairman, I have a comment if I could. I respect your opinion about not making sure this concept plan is not set in stone. But the fact that we promoted this or pushed this out tonight, it's being seen by the residents, it's going to create an uproar, whether we like it or not, because of the number of units that you're proposing. Again, I know it's only a concept, but when people in the neighborhood see this potential development coming in with quarter acre lots and not going by the zoning, I have a feeling that there's going to be some pushback. So just so you're aware of that. But, you know, I mean, I like the idea of the affordable component and keeping it reasonable for people, but I can say I'm not really a fan of this particular quarter acre development. I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else with any?
Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. Just a couple of things. One, this is a concept plan. And what is on this concept plan that they have right now is a road that would run through there. So you're actually creating a neighborhood with the road and houses facing it on both streets. The smaller footprints are going to drive down prices. I've talked with some of the local developers on some of their open space residential design projects, and, you know, we were talking about price points, and he had said that, you know, he's trying to keep his homes within half a million dollars on these 15,000 square foot lots, he said. But what's happening is that you've got these bidding wars that are going on, which are just driving the prices up. So we're really, in Tuxbury Market, we're missing new construction, affordable homes, and I mean affordable with a lowercase a, which is affordable to people making modest incomes, and that could be two families or two-income households. The large capital A affordable, which Steve, you had referenced, that's always going to be a concern because we're chasing the 10% all of the time, and, you know, we're trying to do things to tighten it up a little bit. But I just wanted to point out that the reality out in the market right now is that we can't provide homes for people that are middle income in this town because of the quarter acre, or I mean, the one acre zoning that we have in place today. And lastly, just from a, this goes back to the town center master plan and trying to develop a town center. When you're trying to develop a town center, you want to see an increase in density because you want to have people that are going to be walking to the town center so that we can bring businesses to the town center. You know, we have been trying very hard to get a coffee shop at the old police station, and one of the national coffee providers has told us that they just don't see the numbers there as far as pedestrian and even car traffic. And we all know that 38 is a very difficult road to navigate. We're looking at the 2021 project that's going to be coming through and would be capturing the intersection of Pleasant Street and Main Street. So I just wanted to kind of put that all out there just for a broader context. Not saying that I'm supporting this or that I'm opposed to it, but all of these things kind of go into the decision of whether or not to allow for this upzoning in different areas of town.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. I'll bring it back. What is the pleasure of the, or does anybody on the board have any other questions or comments? Mr. Fowler? No? All right. What is the pleasure of the board? You know what, just again, it's kind of the notes have gone back and forth, and I asked the same question. Someone will probably ask, why is this not spot zoning? I asked Mr. Sadwick off to the side, and it is not a set standard. It is typically determined based on size of lot, but there is no minimum size. It's really up to, if challenged, the court to make a determination. I don't know, but I mean, 11 acres is a fairly sizable piece of property. So, and as I think you pointed out, was it 11? If you did, no, I mean, if you did, if you did with the 40, R-40 as it stands, you'd get 11 homes. So really, you're talking about, you could break it up into 11 lots.
It'd probably be more nine or 10 with the lettings.
But I'm using it as a ballpark, though. That's fine. So nine. But either way, so you're really talking about nine potential buildable lots. So I can't tell you that it would win or lose if someone were to challenge that, but that's why not on its face, just because it's one piece of property, it's not necessarily spot zoning. So that would address, in case anybody is asking or concerned. So what is the pleasure of the board on this article? We'll refer to this as the R-10 article.
Okay. Just one more question. And certainly, we're here, and maybe this is a big leap, maybe it's a lot to consider, but we don't want to let this piece of property leave vacant. I mean, we'd like to see something nice happen. Yes, we can, somebody could come in, they could sell it at a fire sale, and a developer could come in and put an R-40. I mean, you could, there's a lot of things that could happen. So, you know, we don't want, I would like to understand if there is any openness, anything that the town sees. I mean, before we just, you know, walk away and put it to a vote. I mean, it may be a good vote, it may be a bad vote. I don't know. But, you know.
So let me try this.
Walk away.
Let me try this.
Want to work with the town.
Right. So let me try this. So I mentioned it when I spoke about the R-20, which to me is typically, would be half acre versus quarter acre. Would any of the board members comment on their feelings if this were presented as, what I'm going to refer to as an R-20, which would make them half acre lots? So you have, how many is it on here right now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? So then you'd be half that, it'd be 14.
Wow.
I mean, give or take. I mean, I'm just, just because he's asked, I'm just throwing it out.
I would rather ask the engineers if, I would rather ask them, have you made a plan or proposal at R-20? So we would be voting on something with all the facts in front of us.
I can answer that through, Mr. Chairman. Now, we have not done any kind of concept that would reflect a half acre lots. We were tasked with coming up with a plan that can maximize the site based on quarter acre lots, based, you know, and again, it was all predicated on discussions that we've previously had with the community.
And again, I guess when I brought that up, my intention would have been that we would have tabled this and allowed them to come back in, put some information on it if they wanted to. You know what I mean? Rather, we wouldn't vote on it tonight because we don't have to make that decision yet. We have a little bit of time. But I just threw it out because I figured if it didn't change anyone's opinion, or did, it was just more informational for the proponent. So I'll just go around. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, you had a question?
Just a point of information. With this zoning change, it has to go to the town meeting first before they even bring a plan to us.
So again, I want to clarify, if this goes through, it never comes here. This change of zoning, these will be single-family homes and built out, this is not a development. We have to stop calling it a development in terms of a project that comes before us. If this zoning goes through, they have the space to build approximately 28 single-family homes by right. There is no more, there'll be nothing that comes before this board.
Mr. Chairman. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, our decision tonight has, or down the road, has no reflect because the town has to eventually vote on this at town meeting. So we can endorse the article, but they have to approve it at town meeting as well.
Correct. But we're making our recommendation.
So when we vote for this, we're endorsing the fact for it to go to town meeting?
Nope. Well, you get three options. We can either recommend adoption, which means we like the proposal and think town meeting should approve it. We could recommend indefinite postponement, which means we do not, or we can make no recommendation. So there are three options. We're just, we have to hear it and make one of those three decisions, and then town meeting will get to vote on it with whatever recommendation we have, just as an informational thing.
Mr. Chairman. If I may, I think, I think as you just stated, there's some clarification that needs to be expressed when this article is brought up, if it does in fact get to town meeting. As you just stated, for the not-informed resident may think it's going to come back in front of the planning board. That is, it's critical. That is a critical component to this, that that's explained if it is brought to and that's a concern.
So what I would say to that is amongst us, I think we're going to have to make, I mean, it's a citizen petition. So they're going to come up and propose their article. We'll give our recommendation. If it's the will of the board that you'd want, and I guess in this case, that's me, right?
It'll be you.
If you want me to then, if they don't clarify that, to go up and do so, then I can do that. But I mean, again, it's not our article, it's not a town article, so whatever is not mentioned by the proponent, if it's the will of the board that you want, you know, us to have a further comment, I think we kind of got caught on that the last time. When we didn't go up, when we probably should have, to at least give our recommendation when there was an amendment.
Right. Things happen so fast at that.
I mean, technically, we're in session during town meeting, so we can do those things. But I just, I'll just throw it out there that if that's not brought up and it's the will of the board, we can make that clarification during town meeting if that's what the board wants.
And I, just one last thing, Steve. I mean, I think, as I touched on it too earlier, and Mr. Fratelli touched on it, us, the board receiving this tonight, I understand we're voting on the parcel. But us receiving this tonight, and if this was in the packet, I think we would have had a lot more people in here having an opinion.
See, that's part of the problem though. We shouldn't, because it's not part of it.
Well, but it is.
It's the petition, you're offering it, but that's where we get into the trouble is because people think that the project as submitted is being submitted when it's not.
No, I understand that, but when you.
Two-edged sword.
It is, but when you, right now, residents at home are watching and they're not seeing this, and they're looking what we're going off of, and they're seeing a small glimpse of this, and they're only understanding this. This is, 28 houses are going in that lot if this is adopted at town meeting.
However, at town meeting, this would not be there.
I understand. But this is here now, and then they go to town meeting and they don't have anything. They have that map with a parcel that's grayed out, and it's, town meeting, as you know, very confusing. It happens quick. Someone makes a substitute motion, and everything's blown up, and people are going, what just happened? So having this in front of us here and then not having us in front of us at town meeting, very confusing for people. And I think by us sitting here supporting this tonight, we're not representing the people. We're representing right now, we're going to represent the developer if we support this. We're not representing the town residents. And that's not, my opinion, that's not what we're here for. And it's just opinion. And I understand where you're coming from, but we're voting on the parcel, but tonight, we're seeing a map that could go in that parcel.
I guess what I'll say, I'm sorry, Mr. Sadwick, just again, I don't want to discourage people from bringing in more information to us, but if we start doing that, what you're suggesting, that's exactly what we're going to do, because they're going to bring it forward, and they're just going to bring in the one that just shows the parcel. And we're not going to get an example of what might go there as informational, you know, for us to have. But it's not, it shouldn't be the basis for a decision one way or the other, because it doesn't exist at this time. That's not set in stone. It's not going to be that. It might be that, but we don't have any control over an example. And I think that's where we get into the problem. So we have to just do what we're asked to do, which is, you either support or you don't support the article as submitted, not the information that's additional to it, because it's not really part of the article. Again, you can use it to make your decision, but I'm just saying, like, you know, saying that it won't be there when we get to town meeting, it shouldn't be there because it's not a real thing. It's informational, not set in stone. So, you know, and like I said, it's sort of a two-edged sword. We want more information, but I also don't want to discourage people from bringing those things in, because I've seen articles fail at town meeting because people get caught up on an example that has nothing to do with the actual article. So, Mr. Sadwick, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That was an important conversation to have. The only thing I wanted to point out is that as the article stands right now, they would have to come back to the board because of a subdivision. The board wouldn't have the discretionary, the discretion that you have under zoning, but because an R-10 lot would be allowed, and with the number of lots there and the buildout of that road, the planning board would be involved on the subdivision side for the creation of those lots. So, but you have less discretion than you would in zoning.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. I apologize if I left that out. Sorry. Was there, I'm sorry, did you have something else, Mr. Delaney?
No.
Mr. Ryder?
I'm good.
Mr. Fowler? I don't think I got any answers, just so I'm going to go around. Does it make any difference to you, Mr. Ryder, if they looked at this as an R-20?
No.
Okay. Mr. Fowler?
It would.
Okay. Mr. Fratelli?
No.
Mr. Delaney?
No.
No. Okay. All right. So I'm fine with it either way to be completely honest. So it's just in terms of, you asked for information.
About R-20 or R-10?
What's that?
I think I'm confused. No, I'd rather.
I'm sorry, R-10 was, is what they're proposing, that's a quarter acre. An R-20 would be a half acre lots.
I see the way it is. R-10.
Okay. All right. So with nothing else, what is the pleasure of the board on this article?
I don't know if I have a pleasure.
I have a motion that would, I'd make a motion to support this rezoning change, not this proposal, as we're seeing here, because that does change your mind for a lot of reasons. As Mr. Sadwick said, and I'm getting away from my motion, but as Mr. Sadwick said, he still has to come before us for a subdivision. And I just wonder, why are we saying that you don't? Because there are reasons why any subdivision could be looked at one way or the other and turned up, thumbs up, thumbs down, based on safety, road access. But I would make a motion to change this area to R-10 as submitted by the petitioner.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And obviously, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So three to two. So three to two on adoption for that article. For recommendation? No? So on this, just again, for clarification, the recommendation is for adoption, three to two. And as I've said before, anytime we don't have unanimous, well, actually, I say it when it's unanimous, I'll say it when it isn't.
Okay.
So when I make a recommendation at town meeting, I'll tell everyone what it was. All right. That concludes the articles. All right. That brings us to agenda. Do we have to close?
Do we make a motion to close?
On the articles, a motion made, do I have a second? Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, that takes care of the articles. Moving on to Agenda Item D. Does anybody need a minute? Does anybody need a minute?
No, I'm good.
Does anybody need a minute?
He's been a minute.
What's that?
Get two minutes.
No, I know, I was saying, does anybody need a minute? Okay, good. All right. So moving on to Agenda Item D, 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street at all. The applicant has requested that this be continued to our September 23 meeting. We have.
You should have the copy. She put it there. She said they're already.
Okay.
Or 7:10.
Okay. So do I have a motion to continue this to 7:10 on September 23?
So moved.
We'll take one as the second. Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item E, 1583 Andover Street. The applicant has requested to continue this to our September 23 meeting. That one is listed. is listed for 7:20. Do I have a motion to continue this hearing till 7:20 on September 23?
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item F, 1625 Andover Street. The applicant has requested to continue this meeting till September 23, 2019, and we have that one for 7:25. Do I have a motion to continue this till 7:25 on September 23?
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item G, 91 Northgate Road. Family Suite Special Permit Continued from 8/5, 2019. Do we have anything on this?
I have no responses.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion that we reject this proposed family suite. You've asked them to come in a number of times. They haven't responded to anybody's letters or concerns. So I'll make a motion that we reject this proposed family suite.
So moved.
So have a motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item H, 1775 Main Street, Lowell 5-C saving bank, signed special permit. Should've put that first. This is easy, you know. Okay. So I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Um, the second, the other one, okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Could you state your names to the record? The floor is yours.
Allison Callman, Lowell 5.
My conservative, Metro Sign and Honing in Tuxbury, 1711 Street, Designated Representative of Lowell 5.
Floor's yours.
I'm gonna read the narrative I wrote and submitted as part of the special, signed special permit application, if that's okay with the board.
Okay.
The Lowell 5 Cent Savings Bank has entered into a lease agreement with Fred C. Church Insurance Agency to be co-occupants of its location at 1775 Main Street. The bank will still operate as a full-service branch to include office space, a conference room, telewindows, as well as the existing drive-up window. The insurance agency will occupy several office spaces. As shown in Exhibit A, which I passed out earlier this evening, attached, each business will use in common the two entrances, entry foyers, the computer station, and the entire main lobby. The zoning officer has determined this type of use as a shared space as compared to two principal businesses, each with its own primary entrance. This interpretation, given the signs proposed, which is attached, per Section 5256 of the Bylaw, multiple signs will require a special permit from the planning board. As can be seen in the attachment provided, the building's design limits the wall space for signage purposes. The designs proposed makes the best use of the space available while allowing the two businesses the signage exposure they require. The planning board and representatives of the applicant, the Lowell 5 Cent Savings Bank, and its designated representative, Metro Sign and Honing, meant for an informal discussion of the proposal at the August 5 regularly scheduled board meeting. Two points of concern were pointed out by members of the board. The concerns were security within the bank to cover the office space to be used by Fred C. Church Insurance Agency, as well as the insurance agency's hours of operation. Both points were addressed by Allison Callman of the Lowell 5. She stated that additional security cameras have been installed to give added security for the insurance agency. She also explained that the bank's lease with Fred C. Church limited the insurance agency's hours of operation to those of the bank. The board expressed satisfaction with her explanation, and an informal vote gave a unanimous thumbs up to the two additional wall signs as proposed. The proposed signs will be non-illuminated acrylic channel letter sets installed under the two existing Lowell 5 signs. The new signs will have a height of 9.5 inches, a length above 171.5 inches, with a depth of .5 inches, to equal 11.31 square feet each. The existing Lowell 5 signs will be raised approximately three inches to accommodate the new signs, which will be sent at under and mounted approximately six inches below the existing signs. The copy of the new signs will be Fred C. Church Insurance. Thank you.
Anything, Dan?
No.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Fallow.
I was satisfied with the proposal as we, was submitted to us some time ago. And I, I still am. So unless someone can tell me why it shouldn't be, I'm in favor of this
All right. Mr. Delaney?
I'm in favor of two. I was in favor of the one you brought up the last time.
All right. Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set as well. I think the added security cameras and the, and the hours of Fred C. Church coinciding with the bank is, is a great, a great thing to work out between the both companies. And I was concerned about security as well, but you kind of addressed those concerns, and I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder?
All set. Thank you.
Chair is all set as well. Open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the sign spe, uh, the site plan spe, I'm sorry, the sign special permit.
Prove the application as submitted.
All right. So I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item I, 434 Main Street. The applicant, this is new, so we should open this first. All right. So I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. The applicant has requested that we continue this to our September 23, 2019, meeting at, 7:15. Do I have a motion to continue this to 7:15 on September 23?
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Brings us to Agenda Item J, which is 1300 Main Street. Modification of Site Plan Special Permit, Use Special Permit, and Sign Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone here for 1300 Main Street?
No, there's not.
Yep. Yeah. Could you state your name for the record, and then the floor is yours?
My name is Joseph Mazzola.
Okay. If you wanna, just-
Yeah, well, I bought this building 2004, um, because I was gonna do my apartment there. So 2010 was when I, I was gonna open up my business. I had 16 parking spots when I first started. I had four in the front, four on the side, nine in the back. So when I, even, when I started the Cafe Cecilia, they said I was gonna cause too much traffic for me having the entrance from Main Street and the exit, Main Street. We eliminated four parking spots on it. And basically, all I'm trying to do is have a little restaurant. I'm only gonna, first phase was, I took the other side over and, used, used, gave you the tables there and the liquor license there. And now I'm going into the second phase, and I'm gonna put it, I have a restaurant with no stove and no kitchen, right, and finally, and the right side, basically, I wanted to take out, so that eliminates a little bit in the side. I just wanna move my, 'cause I have the cordulas in that side, and it's in the way of takeout, and I move it to the left, and make the kitchen a little bigger, which I had the back for storage already for refrigerators. So we have off-street parking there. Not only do we have off-street parking, but we can park next door, because we have, we have an arrangement. They can pack in my side, I can pack in their side, they're mostly closed. As far as the eight seats goes outside, it's basically seating, and a week or two, I won't be using them anymore. They'll be out of there. And when people sit outside, usually, they don't wanna sit inside. So it's never full in and out. It's either they sit out, or they sit in. So basically, it's only a small place. My architect has said, that's the size of a bar truck. We can't understand why, you know, the only ones go through the parking there. And also, I have more parking spots than half the restaurants in Tuxbury. If you want me to name some, I can find. And they have double the seats I have. So, you know, just want you to be fair to me like you do at the restaurants. If you just wanna enforce the seating with me, at least be fair and go with the other restaurants too.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Delaney.
No, I, I did, done okay. You know, I, I approved the, the extra parking space and the 22 seats. I'm happy with what he's got. Done a good job. He's been a good neighbor. Been a great guy on the Main Street, plus he has a nice restaurant. Are we trying to make it a nice restaurant?
All right.
I go along with it.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I don't have any problem with giving the special permit. As he stated, you know, I know the, seasonally, and if you go by in the summertime, people are outside. They're not sitting inside and vice versa. So I don't, I don't feel that the special permit will have any issue with the parking. I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with my planning board members here that, you know, Cafe Cecilia's always been an upstanding restaurant. Mr. Mazzola's been an upstanding businessman, always doing what the town is asking to do. I know Mr. Mazzola did comply recently with the grease trap requirement. He does a great job there. He's been here before, and I've been there before, I should say, and it isn't that crowded on a regular basis. Again, like you said, it's seasonal. So I have no problem, you know, going along and endorsing the special permit to increase the seats and the parking as required by Mr. Mazzola and the town.
All right. Mr. Fallow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, um, let me say this. Say that I bumped into the petitioner on the way in, and I asked him if he could do something for this, at this submittal. There is a snowplow on one of the lots, one of the car spaces, that's there all the time. I said if you could get rid of that, it would make it easier for you to say, I want some relief. So he said he would. So that being said, I, with that condition, that he will take care of that, and I will inform the building inspector that you are going to do that, then I would be in favor of this.
Okay. All right. So we have, you guys have in your package here, it's the memo from Mr. Fratelli. So for clarification, with the change that you're requesting, the number of spaces that would be required is 14. In your submittal, you'd be providing 13 spaces, correct? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. One of the clarifications that was requested, so your largest shift previously was listed as two employees. Is that still?
Yes, it's still the same.
Still the same.
Because the, the part-timers I have, the students, the school students, they're only like 15, 14, and they help us, and they get dropped off by their parents. That's the answer, help we have.
Okay. Did you have something?
Well, that's fine. I, that just doesn't answer the question. So how many employees are actually working, I guess, I think.
So what, how many employees are working in the lot, at the largest shift that you would have?
Largest shift is, I have, they're all part-timers, no full-timers. So it's me, I run the place. And the most we have is two employees, maybe two students.
So four.
Yeah, but these are students, they get dropped off.
Right. But for purposes of the count, employees are employees. I, I understand, but we can make that determination based on what you're saying. But in that case, what we'd have to be saying would be, there might be, we include a limitation that says that, you know, on your largest shift, that no more than two of the employees can be parked in the parking.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you may be using people who don't have cars, that's fine. But we need to know what the largest shift is, because it changes the number.
Yes.
So it's, at four, what's the, what's the actual number then?
Um, so it would be 16 parking spaces. I mean, regardless, they're asking for a waiver.
Right. I just wanna make sure we're waiving the right thing. So, so the actual waiver will be 16 down to 13. Okay? Just so everybody's on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Otherwise, I'm all set. So anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney?
One question, yeah.
Yep.
Could you do us one favor? Your sign is probably the only one on Main Street that doesn't have the address on it. You know, your sign that says Cafe Cecilia. Is that an existing sign where, or is it, no, but it doesn't have the address. There's no address on the sign. I was wondering if you could just put the address on.
Okay, just put it on the poles like that.
The numbers.
Yeah.
His number on the pole, any?
Yeah, I put one on the pole.
Good enough.
Okay. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Anything else from the board?
Is there something on the sign? Is there a change?
I think, I think it was just submitted as all of them. In this case, the only change to the sign would be the request that the address be included.
Is there a change to the sign?
Well, I have one question. When I first bought the building, it used to be Kate, Kate Baum Real Estate used to own it about, for 40 years ago. And the sign is the same exact sign, same size sign. I should've never had to move that sign. Because I, when I, I had two stores there. I had T-Mobile, I had Lisa's Flower Store there. They were using the same sign that it lit up. It was the same exact size. But then, when I started this project, remember this? I mean, I, I applied to the sign, I bought a proof bar for, I had a, because it was, it was nine feet from the curb. They made me move it. I had to take it down, put the same exact sign 10 feet away. It was the same sign passing 20 down. So when I had the sign made, I made the same exact sign that lights up, the same size as anything. So we made it, brought it there, had it installed, and it was electrical wire and everything. But then, when I went in front of the planning board, they said they didn't want it to light up. So I have this sign here. It's all set up to be that up. It was, put the application for lit up sign, but I was wondering if I could light it up.
It's not, I mean-
But that's not a big deal.
That wasn't part of this application, so?
That was part of the application, the sign.
The sign.
Not in their discussion.
Yeah, not in this recent discussion. Well, so it's just, you know, we didn't, I don't know what we-
Was it part of the original?
So if you look at the special permit, it says the sign must have exterior lighting instead of the internal lighting, which is what he's requesting. Right? You want it to be internally lit.
Yes, the same.
And remove the external lights?
Yeah, it's already set up today. It was like that when I had.
Like shining up, and he wants the sign internally lit.
Now, does he have, I, I guess my question is, does he have to come back and resubmit? Or can we, as part of this amendment to the special permit, can we amend?
Well, it references the signed special permit.
It does reference it in the, in-
And it was in the original special permit.
Okay, so we can make the motion to change that, as part of this. That was my concern.
Also, we could, we could separate the pieces as well. If we wanna have him bring in something to show us what it looks like lit up.
I don't, yeah. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, to your point, exactly. It's just a little unclear.
So, yeah. So what I would recommend is, is we could make a decision on the site plan special permit and the use special permit, setting aside a decision on the sign special permit request. I think it would be reasonable for us to wanna see what it's gonna look like lit up.
I think, oh, lit up, yeah.
So-
I think they have a picture. Remember I got it from the-
Is it that, is that in the original permit?
Yeah, that was in the original permit, the picture.
The pic, the, the rendering of that?
I don't have the file.
Okay.
All right. But either way, I'm more inclined, you know, I, I don't know how that works, but what I, what I'd like to see is, light it up, light it up, and take some pictures of it at night, so that we can see what it looks like, and bring that back into us. Also, if you want, if you wanna try to coordinate with the board members, you know, through Anna, of when you're gonna do that, if any of us can go by and see it, that would probably make it easiest for you, so that we can see what it's gonna look like.
I'm basically closed by the time the sign was on anyways.
By the time what?
By, I'm usually closed by the time the sign was on.
So-
That might not be an emergency, which is not overriding the same process, obviously.
Yeah, but I mean, if he's already got it in here, we're just looking for more information, so we can just keep it as part of this.
Yeah, if you want to continue it.
But just that piece. But just that piece, we can take the other part out and just continue the sign special permit portion. You know what I mean? We're just making a partial decision.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you'd prefer us to do it the other way. Do you want us to do it the other way? Is that easier for you?
I don't have a preference. Yeah.
She was just, you consider it a non-substantial.
I'm just confused that i- if it's on, this is not only just for the modification of the site plan, but it's also for the sign permit. So I'm just, I prefer to handle it all at once if we can.
Which is fine, but nothing was submitted to go along with it. So the options are to continue the entire thing until we can deal with the sign.
Or separate.
Break it up. Or make final decisions on this and just have them bring it back as a non-substantial change request.
That'd be fine. I think that's...
That'd be, that makes you...
So then what we'll do is, we'll make the decision on this. You can bring the sign thing in as a non-substantial change. The board will consider it as a non-substantial change. You could bring that in, bring in, you know, like I said, try to coordinate when you think you're going to light it up, and the board members can try and see it. Otherwise, take pictures, so we know what it looks like. I will ask one question, since you brought it up, but if, if you're going to be closed in the hours when the sign would be lit, what is the reason you'd want it lit?
Advertising purposes.
Advertising.
All right, okay.
But you're, so the sign that's there now is the sign that was approved by the site, the sign special permit. All he's doing is, all he's requesting is to change...
The illumination.
The illumination portion. So the sign is there. It was permitted...
So, and that's what my confusion is, if it's, if it's an illuminated sign or a lit up sign, it's illuminated.
For my purposes, I know when I first came on here, how we seem to always want it externally lit and not internally lit. So I'd rather not make a decision on lighting up a sign, having never seen what the sign looks lit up internally. That's all. I mean, the rest of the board can, you know, make their own decision. I'm just suggesting we see what it looks like before we say...
The only issue is, he's going to have to pay an electrician to hook it up temporarily...
And then disconnect.
Right.
And for us to go down and take a look at it, and then...
Right.
There's a cost associated. My opinion, if it's in, I mean, just one person, but if it's in the special permit and it says illuminated, illuminated, exterior illuminated, I mean...
Not internal. That's the, that's the rub. That's why. The sign is actually internally lit, but that was not what was approved.
Correct.
All I'm saying is, if we approve it to be lit up, and then when it lights up, people don't like it, we're sort of out of luck, is what I'm saying. We don't like what it looks like lit. I had no idea what it looks like lit. And we've given other people a hard time about illuminated, internally illuminated signs, and made them change them until we liked how it was going to look lit up. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, my opinion is, I think if he keeps the same wattage there for the light and goes along with the same wattage and the display, I've seen it lit at night. It's not overbearing. It's actually a nice-looking sign, lit, advertising the property, but I mean...
You saw it lit when?
At nighttime. When it's closed, he still has the light on.
The lights on the outside.
You told, they're externally lit, though.
Externally lit, but if he keeps the same wattage, it would be the same, external, internal, I believe, so...
I'm just one person. The board is free to do what it wants.
All I wanted was a number on this.
I mean...
So, Mr. Chairman, if they are, if we're changing it to internally illuminated, then that is a change to the special permit, and that will require a non-substantial change request. And I would like to see what that looks like.
Right, but the signed special permit is part of this modification request. If he's asking for it as part of that, we can make that decision here. It doesn't have to come in as a separate one, because we included it.
It wasn't.
But he's adding information during the hearing, which he can do. We're okay with it.
I guess they can do that. Okay, yeah.
Which is my point of, we're okaying something sight unseen. That's all I'm suggesting.
Make the motion.
Personally, I don't know what it looks like.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I think there's a, there's a significant expense to have us come down and look at it and disconnect it, and then come back in two weeks to say, "Yes, you can put it on," when it's illuminated. As, I'm just one.
As am I.
And the planning board retains control.
Planning board retains control of the...
Illumination.
Okay, so, I mean, I suppose, again, I'm one person. I suppose I'd be okay if we made, you know, we allowed it, but retained control that if, as it looks, we feel that it is not appropriate, that we can return to the externally illuminated.
Correct. I'm okay.
All right. You guys all agree with that?
Yeah.
Close the first.
Is there any audience?
Yeah, I'll throw it back out just to make sure. So with that, with that additional information, does anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Approve it.
I'll make close it first. Close, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All is opposed, motion carries. Now, as to the modification of the site plan special permit, use special permit, and sign special permit, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved with the stipulation that the planning board still has the authority over...
Can we back up a step? Because that's not the original, okay, let's do that first and do it like in order going across. So the modification as to the site plan special permit and use special permit in terms of the parking is that we are approving the change to increase from 12 to 13 the number of spaces on the site. Noting that the required number, based on the largest shift and numbers of seating, would be 16, and we're allowing 13 spaces to be used on site.
Correct.
I think that's it for that. Okay, so then as to the site, I'm sorry, the...
Allowing a waiver.
A waiver.
Yeah, just to clarify that.
And then to the signed special permit...
Making amendment to the initial...
Signed special permit.
Sign special permit.
Modification.
Modification to allow internally illuminated in lieu of externally illuminated.
With the planning board retaining control, once it's, you know, if we find that it's...
After we visit it.
Yes, that we can return to externally illuminated if we wish, or ask for reductions in...
Wattage.
Wattage or whatever.
Are you doing the plow?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Back to, that was, that was part of the parking space, what's that?
Did you guys talk about the hours, extending the hours?
He didn't even bring it up.
Oh, well, I think that's what you want.
I just want to go around.
So...
Should we shut up?
The original, he should bring it up. Hours of operation shall be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday is the original special permit, et cetera. And then the applicant is requesting a change in that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then requesting Friday and Saturday be from 10:00 AM to 10, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So that was part of the application.
Which was not brought up.
Want to do that separately?
Well, trying to figure out how we consider this, since we've already closed it. I mean, nothing prevents us from doing it, I suppose, but, all right. So in the, in the request, though not brought up during the discussion, was the request for the change in hours. Just let the members review it. Just take a look at what's being requested.
I see it. Till 10:00 PM, correct?
Well, that was part of the, we already said that.
He wants to make it 10 to 10.
So it's two different points.
Just on Friday.
And that keeps Sunday the same, right?
Yeah, it should be.
It keeps Sunday the same, though?
Sunday is not mentioned. Yeah, Sunday would still be 6:00 PM.
What is the pleasure of the board as to that portion?
Make a motion to include that as part of...
The first two, the site...
As a condition?
Include that in...
To amend the...
Ron, you have those, please.
The operating hours.
I don't want to have this statem.
All right, so let's, just to clean this up, so under the modification of the site plan special permit and use special permit, the motion is to allow 13 spaces, the waiver from 16, which is what would be required, the, in the increased seating, the 22 that's listed, the removal of the plow, that is a condition of, must be done immediately, and the request for the change in operating hours to...
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday would be 9 to 9. Friday and Saturday would be 10 to 10, and Sunday remains as listed in the permit.
And then...
That's correct, Mr. Mazzola, right?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Jay had mentioned about the number on the address.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, that's right. Including, adding the address onto the sign, the, the property address. So that, that's everything on the first two portions. And then on the signed special permit, the motion as was stated for the internally illuminated remaining, the control remaining with the planning board. Do we feel we have it all? All right, so that's the motion.
God bless you.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Good luck. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, and check out the sign.
All right. Moving on to agenda, actually, old business. Is there any old business that anyone needs to discuss?
Yeah, one question.
Mr. Delaney.
At our last meeting, somebody brought in a proposal, you know, for Pike Street, and it was an over 50 development, you know, I played, so is it residentially zoned at an